Opening the Littleton Zoning Board of Appeals meeting for Thursday, May 22, 2014. We're at the Littleton Town Office's Room 103, 37 Shattuck Street, Littleton, Mass. The first item on the agenda is a 7:15 public hearing on case number 831A, case of Matthew Field for a special permit variance from Section 173-10B1 and Section 173-31 to allow a change extension or alteration to a pre-existing non-conforming dwelling at 18 Washington Drive. Mr. Vice Chairman, I'll ask you to resume to take over conducting the meeting. I need to stand down as I may have a financial interest in the outcome of the case.
For the board's information and for the audience's information, before I get into this particular case, I want to point out that there has been a land court case, or actually a appeals court case, called Gale versus Zoning Board of Appeals of Gloucester, back in 2011. And it established, you know, some precedence in regards to non-conforming lots, non-conforming structures, and special permits versus variances. In that case, you know, it stated that the appeals board of Gloucester and the town of Gloucester required the applicant in that particular case because new non-conformities were being created, they needed a variance, and a special permit. As a building inspector, I used to have the same thought on that till both building inspectors and zoning officers were split on it. This particular court case came out and made it very clear that once you have a non-conforming lot, which creates all non-conforming uses and structures non-conforming, or a non-conforming structure on a particular lot, that no variances are required. It's not a variance, it's strictly a special permit. Even when you relocate or do create a new non-conformity, it is still a special permit, it is not a variance. So, you know, that seemed to be the case with 18 Washington Drive. So, because of the case of Gale versus Zoning Board of Appeals of Gloucester, Appeals Board, Court of Appeals, 2011, that kind of sets a precedence for the particular cases coming up. All right. In regards to case 831A, Matt Fields for a special permit slash variance, we always advertise special permit slash variance in case some information should change during the hearing. All right. The way the hearing is going to be conducted, the applicant will present information to the board. The board will then be given the opportunity to ask questions in regards to the case. After that, I will open up to Butters or anybody else in the audience. You know, speak, or I will recognize no people as they request to be recognized. Mr. Field.
Before you do, you might want to point.
Okay. I got so far off on these. All right. We have the standing members of the board, the regular members, myself, Mr. Cantino, Mr. Yates, and Ms. Hollinger. Rod, will you be the fifth voting member? All right. I even had it written down, and I put it. Okay. Thank you very much. Mr. Field.
We are requesting that we put a house. I have the question of the house.
The current house?
The current house is right here, in line, right here. The new structure, our proposed, is right here. We initially had it set back further because we had both setic systems on this side right here, reserved and primary, but they got changed with the Board of Health requesting us to move back to back with all the other existing, so we wouldn't be doing walls and build time altogether. So that moved the house forward right here to keep the offset from the setic system itself.
And so how much have you increased?
Let me go with your presentation if you would, please.
To create, to put the house on this site, we would have, we could have put it back, but we can't because of the setic system. So, we are moving the house forward, so it's 18 feet off the lot line. The existing structure that was there met the front offset and at 30 feet. It did not meet the side offset, but just the conformity of the lot itself makes it so that you can't have a setic system in the house on the property without either having the system in the front yard and having a retaining wall, or not meeting the side variances for the wetlands and not having a retaining wall on the side as well.
Question for you.
Sure.
This is a Board of Health plan, you think it?
Yes.
All right. There's information that is missing on here or not indicated. Do you know where the lot area is of this particular lot? Because what we have to do is establish all the non-conformities and then any new non-conformities. And from this plan, you know, one of the things is that we need to go through a lot area, front yard setbacks, et cetera. That information's not on here.
Bill, it does, it's 100 by 100.
Okay. We have the.
Are you ready for questions?
What is the front yard on this lot?
100.
100 feet?
Yeah.
And that's not going to change, correct?
No.
And the lot area's not going to change?
No.
Okay. What's the existing setback for the building that's there now?
It is 42 feet.
And what is the proposed setback?
18 feet.
What is the side, yeah, setback on either side?
16 feet and 51 feet.
Okay. What is going to be the new setbacks sides?
Oh, that's the new side.
Okay. What is the existing?
The existing is six and a half.
Six and a half feet?
Yep.
Which side is that on?
That is the.
The street is the top, correct?
Yeah.
Okay. So that's on the right side?
Yep, that side, right.
Okay. Okay. And the left side?
The left side is 57 and a half.
And what is the rear setback of the existing building?
It is 33.
And what is going to be the new setback?
The new setback is going to be 40.
Do you have anything else to present to us at this time?
No.
All right. I would like to read, before we get to the questions. Do you have anything else to present to us at this time?
No.
All right. I would like to read, before we get to the questions, you know, we have a statement from Mr. Bernier, the zoning officer, which sheds additional light into this, and I think confirms or, you know, some of the backup to what Mr. Fields said. This is dated May 21, 2014, to Board of Appeals from Zoning Officer Roland Bernier in regards to 18 Washington Drive. Advocate is requesting a special permit to allow redo setback from the frontage property line. The current setback required by zoning is 30 feet. The proposed setback scales to approximately 17.5. 18 Washington Drive is a legally pre-existing non-conforming lot of 10,000 square feet with a single-family dwelling established on the lot. And a note, undeveloped, undeveloped, undersized lots generally enjoy a setback exemption allowing setbacks from property lines to be equivalent to those setbacks established at the time the lot was created. Since this lot had been developed, this exemption is no longer available. The applicant seeks to demolish the existing dwelling and construct a new single-family dwelling and a new septic system. The applicant has configured the septic system and reserve area in such a manner as to satisfy the Board of Health and the Conservation Commission requirements. The placement of the septic system in reserve area has eliminated the location of proposed single-family dwelling to be within the required 30-foot setback. The applicant is seeking relief from the 30-foot setback requirement to an approximate proposed 17.5-foot setback as measured from the little street front property line. Do you agree with all that?
I'm on my second.
Okay. All right. Questions from the board. Cheryl.
That new house that you're building looks like it's approximately twice the size of the old house?
Yes, it's right around...
Do you have a drawing of it?
I do.
Thank you. That would be helpful, so we can see what kind of impact it has on your neighbors. This is the front?
That's the front, yep.
And it's basically a flat front?
It has, it has, this right here is a four-foot bump out for the garage.
And is that with, is that...
That was just, that was just the main, that's right there.
And this is the 18 feet here?
Yep, it's right there.
And the main house is how far? Over with the deck?
Yeah.
No, I see the deck takes up the 4 feet difference. Okay.
Can you just sit down with your...
Yes. And it just, it looks like from your hash marks that this is the old house that's on this property?
That's, this is, this is the adjacent property.
Okay. Was there a house here before?
There is still a house right there, yep.
Still a house right here?
Yep, yep.
So is this a, two pieces of property?
This is a house right here on, this is 18 Washington, this is 20 Washington, and this is 22 Washington.
Are you going to have to come before us for both of these also?
Let's just keep it till there's one lot, Cheryl.
No, it's appropriate to ask questions about what is going to happen to an abutment.
No, it's not.
And yes, it is.
It's only appropriate to...
Yes, it is.
...to what presented?
No, Bill, that's wrong. It is appropriate to ask questions about the impact to a neighborhood and an area.
Cheryl.
Bill, don't go there.
Right now, on his proposal and the plan presented to us, it's a vacant lot on the side. I'm not even sure if Mr. Fields owns that property.
There is not a vacant lot, there's a house here.
There's a vacant lot right here.
And there is a house here, and this is the area I am asking about.
Let's stick to the property in question, that 18 Washington Drive.
Eventually, I will, because of the way we configured, configured all these septic systems, as we designed them all together, they will, the system right now is in the back, it's going to be in the backyard, and that house will have to be raised to accommodate that septic system.
So you're putting a whole development of houses that are coming much farther forward than the existing houses?
Or we could put all the septic in the front yard and keep the houses on the, and have retaining walls.
Which street, I'm trying to remember what street's back here.
That's Lincoln.
That's Lincoln Drive?
Yep.
Okay.
We have a house right here already up. And I have the...
So present...
That's the main drive right there. This is the appropriate, that I'm talking about right here. That's 17 feet off the front here now.
I see. So you're tying all of these septic systems in together, and that's...
We're not tying them together, we're just making so...
I mean, you're making the grounds...
Instead of having a retaining wall on each one of these properties, we went before the board to design systems that tie together...
All the systems will butt each other groundwise, so you'll have a flat backyards.
And we had drainage that went from this property right here all the way over to, we incorporated catch basins, and dry wells in each one of the properties, and a retention area down here to tie all the water, just to keep the flow from going, go to that one.
Okay. I understand, I understand what you're doing now, Jen, ask for these down there.
Rod, do you have a question?
Yeah, I was talking about the... And I just wondered, what are the setbacks?
I can, I can scale them all pretty well.
What was the question?
I'm wondering what the setback is on the present billing on 20 and 21, to see if it's consistent with the 14 feet he's asking for.
Well, first of all, on number 1... Okay. On number 20, it shows on the plans what you should have received with your, the existing billing is further back in existing value on year number 20. 21 doesn't count, it's only adjacent properties. So on number 20, it's further back in number...
60 feet.
The element is in the vacant one.
But it was also...
Oh, okay. So it's way back, it's right now, way back.
Yes, yes.
Okay. And there's nothing on the other side?
And it's a basic lot.
Vacant lot, correct.
And I believe that's how long the land...
Yes.
And what is it in the neighborhood, what's the setback tend to be in the neighborhood? I don't have your...
On Lincoln Drive, there is two houses that need the current setback, on Lincoln Drive, of 30 feet.
I think we were asking about Washington Drive.
In Washington.
But one of the things to look at is if the whole block has a big setback.
Full lot is about 16 feet of house.
Yeah, yeah. The bylaw says the house adjacent each side...
The first house on Washington Drive right here is approximately 16 feet off the asphalt, which, and is about, is a, I mean...
Off the asphalt or the right way?
Off the asphalt. And this is about 7 feet off, the asphalt is off the right of way.
So your 14 feet, that you're proposing that off the asphalt or off the right way?
I'm 26 feet proposed off asphalt and 18 feet off of the actual right of way.
And that's what we're putting up here.
What's the scale on that plan? What is it?
I think now what, what's it looking at?
I saw, do you know what the, had this been, had this been an unbuilt lot, what the setbacks would have applied based on when it was established?
What was the question?
Roland said that if this was an unbuilt lot, that prior setbacks would have applied, right?
If it was undeveloped, then it's...
It was undeveloped. So I'm just wondering what...
But it's not.
I know, but I, but it's an interesting question.
I think I have the answer to that.
Are you done with a question?
I'm just curious.
Yes.
I believe it's, it's either 15 or 18 feet with new construction on a vacant lot. I can double-check that. In fact, I could make a call right now and find that.
No, we don't, we don't need it because it does not apply.
But it is, it is something to look at and something that...
Jen, do you have any other question?
Based on, you know, this, and the other thing you're going to lose, it looks like, is your walkout in the back, if you have the...
There's no walkouts.
Okay. Well, that, that was my, you know, this shows, if you had to decide, you could have had a walkout.
Yeah. The top of concrete is 115. The grade in the back is probably around 13, I think, around the septic system, all around that side, and then slopes off towards the left side, towards the vacant lot.
Okay. I did drive by today, and I drove down Washington, then around, and, you know, drove down Lincoln. And my, my impression, I didn't measure, but my impression was the houses were very closely spaced, so...
We do have Butters.
No. Sean, do you have a comment?
No, not yet.
Does anybody want to see the house plan, the actual house plan? Yeah, I think you have.
I think the front elevation was what we needed to look at, so we know what your neighbors are going to look at.
Do we have, okay. Anything else? You want to add? Board members, any other questions?
Not yet, but I'd like to hear from the Butters.
Sure. I know, I'm getting a little, I'm running the jury. Calm down. All right. Any Butters who, see, the officials in the audience, any Butters who would like to have a comment or a question? If so, please do notify us by name and address.
Yeah, we will say something.
Okay. Name and address, please.
I was going to say that, you've got to slow down, sir.
I go much slower than what I'm going right now.
You're being rude.
You are.
You are being rude.
Now, Bill.
Back up, back up. Go ahead.
My name is Mary Smith, and we live at 19 Lincoln Drive. This is my husband David Smith.
Go ahead.
Okay. These are men, Mr. Fields is a knowledgeable person. He chose to buy the lot. He wasn't stuck with the law. He knows about the laws. He bought five lots. He, as a surveyor, a contractor, a realtor, he knows what he was getting into. He's had many variances, many exceptions already made for him. It's not a hardship. It's not something he was stuck with. He chose it. How many exceptions do we make for someone? And you're talking about your swales? I'd like to see the swale that belongs beside my house, at my house.
Oh, my God. Mr. Fields?
But you put dirt in instead of taking dirt out.
All right. Let me comment on what you just said. First of all, there's no high shovel that needs to be shown, because it's not a variance, it is a special permit. Okay? And with the, no, so it just needs to be, the criteria is for, under special permits. In regards to swales and everything else, whenever a contractor, or developer, or builder, or anybody comes and builds on a lot, that falls under the state building code. And the building code does address the configuration of the land and whether it creates more runoff onto adjacent properties, and that's restricted by the building code. And it will be covered by the building inspector at the time of any building permit and final sign off on the building permit.
I'm disillusioned.
Yep.
Five houses as a development, however, a development has happened.
Yep, yep, yep. I know what you're saying, and once the construction starts on the ground configuration and everything else, comes under the purview of the building inspector and the state building code.
He was allowed to override the state rules by this town by putting, yes, there are, how many houses are there there? Five.
I own them on four.
You say that, but you went to...
Look at town records.
Listen, sir, you went to the Board of Health with five houses. When we brought up the law, the state regulations about owning five houses fell under the state laws. You put someone else's name on one of the lots, into the Board of Health, and the town allowed you to do that. Okay? You, you, that's why someone else's name is on the lot, not because you didn't go to the Board of Health, only the five properties are wanting to own them, okay?
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Let me ask you a question. How does this, how does this impact, this little development?
I'm downhill from it.
You're worried about groundwater?
Storm drainage.
I understand.
I have a finish, I have a split level.
And it's a very wet area, I understand.
Right.
Unfortunately, that's not our purview. We really can't, we're not the Board of Health, that's the Board of Health's purview.
No, you're not, but how many of your...
And we can't, we can't stop these houses from being built, or, or define how the groundwater's going to run, or define the septic systems, or the number of bedrooms, or anything like that, unfortunately. I'd love to be able to help you.
Yeah, because the law was...
But I can't do that.
Because the regs were changed.
What we can do, the only thing, I know, the only thing we can do is we can try to minimize the impact upon neighborhoods, and try to make sure that properties and variances are, or special permits we give fall within what is normal and acceptable in a neighborhood. It looks like pulling these houses forward, it's going to be much better for you than if we make them put the septic systems out front and put the houses against the back line.
They might not be draining on my property. Right now, all those houses are draining towards my one house.
Okay. Let me restate what I did previously said. If that is, if that is happening, then that is a violation of the measures of state building code, and I believe the Board of Health. Those are issues that should go back to the Board of Health and the building inspector and saying, no, that they shouldn't be done. In fact, these are things that I know, building inspectors do check at the time of issuing the building permits and before they sign off a final. Those are legitimate issues, very well addressed, and, you know, through, and Cheryl just said, it's not through this board, but through the building inspector and the Board of Health.
I'm just concerned where the line is drawn.
It's tough.
You know, so...
We are dealing with the zoning, zoning issues, not the actual construction of the lots. Board of Health comes out and, you know, and several times, we've had to deal with cases here, that the Board of Health mandated things that are not to our preference, but it's not our purview.
Okay. But when does the board say? Because obviously, if you make the house smaller, then it wouldn't fit, right? The set, it would make the setback further.
With the state...
When you say to somebody, your house has to be small, sorry.
The state, the state regulations for zoning in our own by, my law, does not give us the prerogative to control size of structures.
Well, we can control how that comes forward.
Setbacks and where they are on, and again, because of this case that came up in Gloucester, and the appeals court, and the state Supreme Judicial Court ruled on, ruled back and says we have to deal with it as a special permit. Special permit has certain guidelines that are outlined in our bylaw, and it just says if it's detrimental to the neighborhood. All right? The, again, the state building code and the Board of Health regulation and conservation weighs in on that as to whether it's detrimental or not. That's why they review it before it comes to us.
Can I give you a piece of advice? Be a squeaky wheel. Talk to Roland, talk to, when, as the swales and the landscaping is done, make sure things are tied in. Be observant. Talk to, talk to Roland, talk to...
I can tell you that.
Everyone, everyone, you know, make sure that the finished grade, the finished grade actually does what it's supposed to do, and that it's actually draining. You have, I think you have up to two years to appeal a Board of Health drain or something like that, if it's affecting your property adversely. So, you know, be a squeaky wheel. Make sure it drains like it's supposed to, make sure the swales go in like they're supposed to, and that's, that's probably the best you can do in this situation. Houses taller and smaller aren't necessarily better for the neighborhood, you know? And tying in, certainly tying in septic system raises, so there aren't a whole bunch of retaining walls, is safer and better for a neighborhood, safer for children, safer for, you know, the community. It's just, you see where we're at?
I understand. I understand where you're at.
I have, I have a couple of questions.
I don't know if Mr. Smith had any comments they had to...
I understand.
Okay.
Reference to many variances, what were the other variances?
No, there were no variances.
No, you said that he got...
Well, he had to go to the conservation, then he had a second, you know, just that whole idea that he didn't have to follow the state rule because, put someone else's name, it's just a constant, you know, all the houses have the variances. If it was a regular people, all the septic's are connected and sharing fill areas. It's, you know, no one...
Which, which really is a good thing. When your neighbor doesn't benefit by having walls every 10 feet and...
But if the houses, if individuals really bought the houses, they would never be able to build that size of a house on those tiny lots.
We get variances in that neighborhood all the time.
Not like that. We got, we have a person that had, that before the rules were changed, you know, someone got on the board that knew the rules changed for their benefit.
Board of Health regulates, regulates the size of houses, the number of bedrooms.
Right, that was true.
Not us, I'm sorry. That's the Board of Health's purview, not ours.
And it doesn't, it doesn't... And it doesn't, it doesn't help the environment. And that's what, that's the whole, that was supposed to be the whole thing, that we were going to help the environment, type of, it was supposed to help the environment and hardships, and this is, this isn't a hardship.
Well, well, one thing I do notice is that all the drainage from the roofs of these structures will go into dry wells that will recharge the groundwater.
I agree if Mr. Field does what he says he was going to do. But if you ride by my house right now.
It's in the construction phase, isn't it?
No, you ride by my house right now, ride by my house.
It, you know what? He can't get building per, occupancy permits until he's finished with that kind of thing. So be a squeaky wheel.
I, oh, I am.
Okay.
And he knows that.
And just, just make sure everything's tied together, and it's, it follows the board of health's plans for groundwater and septic system things. But it, it really, it really seems like tying those backyards is a good thing.
If they follow through and do what they say they're going to do, I believe it will be okay. But I have an insurance company that's telling me that if my water, if my basement, my finished basement is when floods, it's not, it's not their problem. It's my problem. So I have to make sure this man, because I, you know, does what he says he was going to do. And right now, he has built the dirt up, not, not down. It's supposed to go down, not up.
I'm going to say one more time, and then I'm going to, after that point. Again, you do have recourse, if you feel you have a problem, or you think it's not being built properly, check with the building department, because they have all the plans and everything else. And it's being built, and even after construction, and even at, at some period after it's finished, if there's a problem. I believe it's up to one year, if there are problems, because you get seasonal and everything else. You can still go back to the board, and you can go back to the building commission.
I appreciate hearing that, because I'm looking out my window every day, wondering if I, I need to know if someone's going to be signing that piece of paper.
And I can tell you what happened, because I was a building inspector for many years. I ran into the same situations. And I had people come to me and everything else, we went out and did the research, made the developer come back and, you know, do as-built topo plans and everything else to show that he built to what was approved, or if it wasn't, the corrections were made. So, yeah, you do have recourse, no, for a length of time even afterwards.
Roland's not going to sign any occupancy permits in a black, in a back closet. He's a very nice man and very conscientious. And if you talk to him and tell him that these are your concerns, would you, would he please go over things with you before he signs them? I suspect he will. He's very, very conscientious and a wonderful town employee.
All right. Any further questions? Board members, any further questions or a comment? Jeff, before I ask for a close of the hearing, do you have any comments?
Well, I, well, I know we're not allowed to talk about the other lots, but.
No, let's just stick.
I won't approve the setback of the one next door.
Let's stick with this one.
And, and I, and I would like to point out that this, this could be a different design going the other direction and conform.
Well, it doesn't meet the side setback for the reserve area.
Oh, 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 I see. This is what this line is here. Okay, gotcha. Okay.
And, and we, I mean, initially, we had, we had another plan already for the board of health, and it had both the reserve and primary on that side, where we could have had pulled the house back to meet this setback. But to satisfy the conservation, the board of health, we put the reserve area inside and primary in the back, and tied it in with 15 Lincoln and 11 Lincolns slopes and grades.
Mr. Cantino.
I don't have any questions.
Mr. Stewart.
The only thing is, since there isn't an adjacent dwelling with a similar setback, this is going to establish it for the, for the adjacent neighborhood, you know, adjacent sites. And I have to echo what Jeff said about the one next to it, even though we're not supposed to consider it.
And the consideration is, will it be detrimental to the neighborhood?
Yeah. In that neighborhood, probably not.
Anything else? Mr. Bell.
No additional questions.
Ms. Hollinger.
All set. I understand.
Okay. Any additional comment for the others?
Yeah, I guess I would like to say one more thing, because we always hear, in that neighborhood, quote unquote, in that neighborhood. It's not fear to bring down the neighborhood. It's, you know, by allowing things that are wrong to keep on being wrong, letting new things be wrong because it happened incorrectly years ago. We're supposed to be going the other way and bringing things more in tune with what we want, to keep the environment protected. And it's a perpetual wheel down, allowing these bigger homes are worse than what was there. You won't ever convince me, because you're, these, the ground, trees were cut, the ground, there is less ground to absorb the water. So in that neighborhood, it doesn't make me feel good that you say it that way.
And I understand. But, but as the Board of Appeals, we only have certain limitations to what we can address and everything else. And, and I do understand what you're saying. I do understand.
What, what I would, I would go to the planning board, and, you know, what, one of the recourses your people with your feelings in that neighborhood would have is to establish an overlay district and establish some new criteria for what can be built there. Maybe a height restriction that's, that's more than what is on an acre lot, it may be something else.
Yeah, along that line, what, what could be in here is percent of lot coverage. And I know a lot of towns, especially in aquifer zones, groundwater protection overlay zones, whatever you want to call it, there is a, you know, bylaw for lot coverage. But along with that, that, you know, until, they say, when you have a recharge, and what's shown on this plan is all the water that comes off the roof goes into a dry well, which means under any other town's bylaw, and, you know, it's, it's guideline by the state, basically says, you're not adding any lot coverage. No, not, you're not decreasing the lot coverage of this property by taking all the water off the roof through appropriate measures and putting it directly on the ground. Again, I've seen this happen, and I, I know how it works, so.
Phil, her concern is part of her finished area is underground, and she's just worried about increased water flow.
His basement is my first floor. You know?
She has a split entry.
And I have a split entry.
But you have windows.
You know, so, and that's half out of the ground itself. But.
Yep.
My first floor, you know, looks into his second floor. Exactly. It, you know, it's.
Call in the day and motion to close the hearings.
Motion to close.
One second.
Second. Any discussion there? All those in favor of closing the hearings, signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed? Okay. We will make the decision whether the appropriate time allowed under the zoning bylaws, and whether the decision is filed with the town clerks, a copy is available through the town clerk's office or the building inspector's office.
Well, I think we're ready to make a decision now, aren't we?
If we can, well, we got another out, again, I don't want to hold them up too long. If we can do this, Kelly, what?
I have to recuse myself for the next.
Yeah, let's, Mr. Smith next.
Let's just go through.
Right. Any discussion on this before we get a decision? Or does somebody want to make a motion?
I am concerned about the reestablishment of, of property lines.
I think that property lines are.
Reestablishing property lines?
Yes. By approving this setback, we are therefore establishing a setback in this area, as Rod pointed out.
All right, that's a change in property lines.
It's a setback.
Setback, that's what I meant to say. I apologize.
I, I just want to make sure, when I, when I make the decision, it's.
Yeah. I'm, I'm, I am concerned about that, and concerned about the fact it's a whole development that is going to be following these setbacks, and we're going to be right back here. And there's a reason that probably we weren't asked to approve all of them at once. But I think it makes more sense to do this than to have retaining walls and front yards and ledges for kids and dogs and the right world to fall off of. So.
Anybody else with a comment?
I, I agree with, well, go ahead, John. But I agree with the arrangement of the septic. And we, we've had another situation of a new house being built on an old house that had, that had to be pushed forward. And just so you know, my concern was, is that there's enough setback to park a car in front of it, which 18 feet is about that. So that would, that would have been my concern, and that would be my concern for any further setbacks on that, in that street.
Sean?
I mean, I can sympathize with everybody, everything I've heard. The thing is, I, I can understand where the builders come from. I mean, it's, it's a tough situation trying to make this all work and still make a marketable home. I've seen his work in town, it's, it's been very good. I haven't heard problems of, from the developer, of, of his work. The other thing that, to keep in mind with this house is that the actual living space is still another four feet behind, beyond that 17 feet, because your garage jogs out, and you have a farmer's porch. So, you know, I don't have a problem with it. The house is only 1,700 square feet. It's not a huge home by any means. It's actually on the small side. So I don't think it's overpowering for the neighborhood compared to some of these big Colonials I've seen up there at Long Lake. I like the home. So I'm, I don't have a problem with what I'm seeing here right now on this one particular
Can I move to close discussion?
Roger Ellington, if you could.
Yeah, Roger.
Okay. All right, go ahead.
I have to make a motion to close the discussion.
We, well, no, need a motion for the decision.
Oh, I don't want to make that. You go ahead, Phil.
I got it, I'm with you. All right, I.
I hope I say this going to be wrong.
All right. I will entertain a motion to grant a special permit under section, the zoning bylaw, under 173 dash 10, capital letter B, in parentheses, one, where a change alteration, change extension or duration to a pre-existing non-conforming structure at 18 Washington Drive, as per the plans generally submitted at the hearing. Sure.
Oh, no, you, Jeff can make that motion or.
Oh. Do we approve?
No, I, I said I would entertain the motion if you.
To accept it.
Take it as such, just say salute.
Second, okay.
No, no.
Salute here.
Okay, second. Right, rise to second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those, I'm not going to say that again. All those in favor of the motion is stated and seconded, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Granted. This being a special permit, you may well know that you can now apply directly to the building official for a building permit. You do not need to wait until the decision's written and filed in a 20-day appeal period. But you do so at your own risk. All right?
Thank you.
The decision will be written and filed in the town clerk's office within the appropriate time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your promise and everything else. Hi.
Thank you for coming. And, you know, come to town meeting, if you don't, because there's awful few people make all the decisions for this town. And so, get into town meeting, join boards, become active.
Where's, with the, hold up, right here, right here. There you go.
Time is eight o'clock. The Littleton Zoning Board of Appeals will open a discussion of case number 695A, the case of Kimball Farm Village on the Common LLC, a request to extend the 40B comprehensive permit. Just advise Chair, turn over the table to you. I need to stand down because I may have a financial interest in the outcome of this matter. Please let the record be flat.
I am also standing down because I consult with the owner on other matters.
Good thing you two generated here.
Okay. I'm just trying to find what I did with the paper. All right. The original, well, the one that we did back in 2011, where assigned by myself, Mr. Cantino, Ms. Hollinger, Mr. Stewart, and Mr. Bell, and, you know, you're going to reappoint Mr. Stewart and Mr. Bell to be the alternate members, the fourth and fifth members of the, this decision as well.
Robert Hensel for Kimball Farm Village on the Common. As a point of clarification for, to receive an extension of the permit, do I need a majority vote or a majority?
It's a majority vote.
Okay, thank you. So where we are now is that our permits will expire on July 6th of 2014, if they're not extended by the board. For, from the last time that I was in front of you asking for an extension, my client has continued to explore development opportunities for this property, including keeping this, these permits alive. He has not proceeded with construction, but we have continued with our permits with DEP, for groundwater discharge permit, and we are, we are current with our compliance requirements vis a vis DEP. And preparing for this hearing tonight, I, I know that on the 15 Great Road project that the town has exceeded their 40B requirement, I view, even in light of that, I view this project as a very viable project. And, and looking at the, the purpose of modern development and, and where the state legislature has gone with things such as 40R and location of sites, and the, the goal of having greater density sites within walking distance to town amenities while preserving viewscapes and other things, I think that this is exceedingly viable project. We are looking for a two-year extension. I, as does Mr. Kimball, 100% realize that this will be our, our last chance of extending this permit. I do think it's a good project. It remains a viable project. Mr. Kimball hasn't started building on that, on this project as of yet, but we, we have been looking into other alternatives and certainly wish to maintain our current permits. So that's essentially where we are. I, I know that this board, and particularly these members, have a long history with this project, so I'm willing to address any questions you have or, or concerns.
Good procedural question.
Go ahead.
He's not asking for the approval today to extend. He's just asking for the right to come ask us? I'm a little confused.
No, he's asking for an extension.
He's asking for the extension today.
Because this runs out July 6th.
It runs out July 6th. So I don't want to have a lapse in the, I don't want to have a lapse in the permitting.
You're, are you done with your presentation?
Yeah, just trying to address your questions. I'm sorry.
Okay, so I can't, I have to ask permission to start questions.
You have a question?
I have questions.
Go ahead.
And statements. I don't see how in good conscience we can possibly extend this permit. The laws have changed and codes have changed for septic design and for fire codes, and these are six years out of date. Even as we worked on 15 Great Road, fire codes changed. I think that these things need to be re-looked at, re-examined. There's not a board in, or a state government in the world that will take testing for septic systems that's six years old. Groundwater levels change. Now, all that being said, we have a new housing authority. There is looking for. They're looking for friendly 40Bs, and this would fit that category beautifully. There's a board with Jimmy Carr on it and Jeff Yates on it and Richard Crowning on it that are doing these friendly 40Bs and trying to get the housing authority. This property seems maybe ripe for a partial rezone in front of the town, and that's where it would belong. That question would belong at the town meeting. And this seems like the ideal place to put a friendly 40B and renegotiate for us what makes sense. Perhaps we can get more of a rental component and get more credit for it. Perhaps, you know, there are lots of options that this housing authority should have the ability to explore. And by going ahead and granting your extension, we have knocked the housing authority out of being able to do that. So I, and I also remember three years ago, talking to you before 15 Great Road came ahead of us and asking for you to please go ahead and pull some permits so we'd have some insurance. You guys didn't. You told me you'd try, but you didn't. And so I don't feel like we owe you anything. And I think where this belongs is in the housing authority's hands to try to renegotiate this into a lovely 40, friendly 40B that makes more sense for the town, where the town's not being held over a fire, so to speak. There is a question in there somewhere. Maybe I can't find it.
I can respond to your, one of the things that you raised is the building code issues and the septic permit. Our groundwater discharge plant is, the previous developers started construction of the plant. I stay fairly abreast of septic system regulations and of your fire code was what you had brought up. Septic regulations have not changed, fire code regulations have not changed. Where they do have an impact is whether you have eight or more, or I think it's six or more units in a building. Our configuration's not going to trigger that. So there is no change in the fire code, and if what you wanted to do is, you would have the authority to perhaps condition your permit on, not as the septic system, but as compliant with the fire code regulations, if that's true.
We have longer fire trucks now, and the bends in the roads of that were designed for our fire trucks six years ago. We have bigger fire trucks, and I'm sure we need them, and I'm sure there need to be able to get into a development like this. And we have no way of knowing whether or not they can. So I don't, I don't.
I can answer that question. Fire Department has review of all plans coming in for building permits and for certificate of documents. They will make sure, the Fire Department will make sure that their equipment can appropriately service the project.
When we make it a chance, if we just extend this project, we get a chance to go in and say, no, no, that one can't be in there.
It's not up to us to design the buildings or to say it's going to be a building code or fire code. The building inspector and the fire department will both be.
It met them at the time. It met them at the time. If we just renewed this, then we've grandfathered it, and I don't think that's appropriate.
No, 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 no. We grandfathered the project with another design, the exact design of the building from layup. Again, the Fire Department and the Building Department has the option and the right and responsibility to make sure it fits their department. And if what is being proposed and if the applicant goes through and says, here's where the Board of Appeals approved the 40B, and the Fire Department feels it's not working over their department, they will reject it on the board, then the applicant needs to come back to this board.
Okay.
They will not be built. That will not be the requirements or the capability of the Fire Department.
I don't have the wherewithal to argue that with you. But I will, I will go back to, we have a duty to our town, and our duty to our town is to do the best we can. And having this housing authority that's looking into developing friendly 40Bs, have the authority on this and have, take a look at this and help make it the best it can be for the town, is.
It's not our choice.
Yes, it is our choice. It is our choice whether or not to renew this certificate, as it is.
Then let me ask Mr. Ansel, because I think I can answer that question. If we do not approve this tonight, what is the action of your client in regards to this project?
I think we can appeal your, your decision for not granting the denial.
At this point, do you have any indication that your client would go back and want, if we were to not deny it and everything else, if the 40B permit, comprehensive permit runs out, would he, with whatever entity he is, would they go back and reapply and go through the housing authority and everything else is, is just?
I don't think that that's what our intention is at this point. I think that our intention is to maintain our property values and to look at alternative methods of developing this parcel. To the extent that we do not have other alternatives for developing this parcel, then we're going to return to this project.
And anybody else with a comment question? Mr. Stewart?
Yeah, I've had, when was this originally issued, the permit, six years ago?
It was originally issued in, dated July 26, 2006.
Yeah, and see, that's 2006.
And it was given five years, which would have expired July 6, 2011. On May 19th of 2011, we issued a three-year extension, which runs until July 6, 2014. At this point, they are asking for a two-year extension.
Yeah, well, see, that, I have the problem that this is now eight years old.
Yes.
And we did grant, in their ownership, a three-year extension. And that, to me, sounds like it should be plenty of time to figure out what they're going to do with this property. And now that we're over the inventory, I'm kind of reluctant to say to continue the permit, to extend the permit.
You know, I've had the same question, and I presented it to some of the town officials. The position board is in right now. Do we give them just two more years? Because they have been working with the town through the planning board and I know town administrator's office and whatever else. As they stated at the very beginning, you know, three years ago when we granted the extension, they said that they were going to be working with these boards, see if there's some alternatives, what they could do with a project, scaling it down and adding whatever else. And they've been working with the town, and they're looking for a two-year extension just to continue that and see if they can actually get it going. The opposite of that, if we deny it, what's going to happen with this particular piece of property? Well, going through the appeals, and without them coming back to the board with another whole proposal and everything else, this piece of property does not fit into the zoning regulations. It becomes a vacant lot, existing the way it is now. So I don't know where it's going to go. I am, I am in other feeling, saying, I know there has been some effort on the, part of the applicant within the last three years. You know, I know there's been some back and forth and, you know, whatever else. I am other feeling like, let's give it two more years and see where it goes, rather than saying no and having them walk away or, I don't even want to talk about appeals, but walk away and having this piece of property exist here in the state it is now for many years to come, because I don't believe there's another developer or anybody else to come in and try to pick it up.
But Bill, if they aren't exploring and talking to the town about doing different things and not following this permit, by us not granting the extension, we put the town in control. We give our town officials abilities to negotiate.
Only so.
No, when they have a permit in hand, they have control. They can sit, they can sit there and say, oh, no, if you don't let us do this, we're going to do this. We, there's no reason.
The town has no control. Nobody comes forward to the town.
But Mr. Kimball's not going to leave this sitting vacant, and he's already talking to the town officials about what can be done there. Let's give this to our housing authority. They need properties like this.
It's not going to go to the housing authority. You're not giving it to the town authority.
That will be.
You're misled if you think that way.
I do think that way. Or if they don't want to take it to the housing authority and they want to come before the town to rezone the whole thing, commercial, then that's, so let them come to the town and do that. Let them do their thing. I don't think we need to put a safety net under them. We did three years ago, and it's an eight-year-old project. He's owned that property four years now and left it sitting there. We don't need to put another safety net under him. He's okay.
Mr. Bill?
I would be in favor of granting a one-year extension. I think at that point, we may be in a better position in terms of the leveraging scenario and whether or not permits have been pulled for the other 40B on Great Road so that we wouldn't even have to.
Mr. Ansel, would you be, would your client be willing to take one year at this time and see if something could develop?
I wouldn't reject that, but we are looking for a two-year extension, but the board's prerogative would be to make a motion to, for a one-year extension, then I wouldn't object to that. We may have this discussion again next May, but I'm hoping that that would not be the case.
Three years ago, I asked for a two-year extension instead of a three-year extension. I'm not willing to do this. It's just.
Right. Alan, editing for him?
No, I just think it's a leverage issue. I think a year is a couple of years is reasonable.
I hear what Cheryl was saying, but I, if we weren't to grant that extension right now, I believe you can move forward with the development. Who needs build and just say the heck, we're not going to build just the way it is right now?
Absolutely. There's a bunch of case law about, about what constitutes use of permits and substantial completion, and I.
Or activation of the permit.
Yeah, and my, and although there are various cases on that issue, I think that we could assert a good argument that we have the right to build under our existing permits. We have a number of structures that are partially completed. Our roadways have been utilized. The case law speaks about that a lot of the cases come up in the context of saying that if you approve a special permit for construction, they have been in the context of 40B development, but if you, if you approve a special permit for a project and you don't specify when that permit has to be used by, it was a case two years ago that had, it was a 100-unit condominium complex, and there was a delay of like 18 years between building phase one, which was 50 units, and phase two, which was, which was another 50 units. And the board said that you utilized your permits, town, you can't prevent them from building out the second phase. It did mention, as our permit says here, that you can't put restrictions upon when your production is supposed to be completed. So I think there were a little bit of a gray area there, but my position, and supported by Mr. Friendsworth, is that we, we have units that are existing within this development. If we ended up utilizing, if we ended up changing the use, we could end up keeping those units there, and it might end up being some kind of a strange development with a commercial component with residential houses within them.
Well, the point I'm trying to, the point I'm trying to make is that if, if, say, we don't grant the extension, not that he's going to do it, who knows? But you could end up with the development just as it is, and then they start building, and we end up with, then you have no chance for any input. Now, if you, now, let me speak. If you go two more years, there is going to be discussion. This is all going to be worked out as to what this development's going to become. It's either going to become what it is now, which it isn't, because they're not building, moving forward. So at that point, they're going to come before the boards and present a whole new development. So what you're looking for, Cheryl, I believe will happen with the two-year extension. If you don't give them the two-year extension, you're going to force the issue. And if I was a developer, I would move forward and build just what is there, because I won't take the chance of losing the whole opportunity to build that development.
But I don't think that's terrible.
So that's an area that 40B does, put pressure on us to do something. Oh, I know, but they can only do two more years. It is terrible, but.
No, it's not terrible if they go ahead and start building right now. If they build what we approved and worked hard to approve years ago, and they start building it right now, what's terrible about that?
Well, I gotta think.
I gotta tell you.
This is as dense, this is as dense a development as you could develop, Cheryl, right now, what they have approvals for.
And we've got.
So you're not, you can't, what I'm getting at is you can't go beyond making this even more developed than it always going to be. If anything, there'll be less development there. That's the way I feel, because I've been in this business for years. All I'm saying is, I don't really care for that development the way it has been designed, but we approved it. I'm just saying, somewhere down the line, I gotta think, and I hope, because I know the developer, the people that are behind all this, they're not people from out of state, they're local people, you know, I've seen their work at other towns, other areas. It's been quality work. I, I understand. My only thing is, yes, the two more years, and that's it. They can't go on beyond that, Bill, right? I mean.
Why, they could come back and ask?
For another two years, for another, I mean, when they asked for the three years, that was going to be it.
We'd say the two years was the end of it.
Well, we gave the original developer five years, and they worked on for four years and then a backlog. Mr. Kimball purchased it with the agreement, and he gets a three-year extension to.
No, he purchased it a year before he gained.
So he's had four years, five years. So we've only had four years to work. We're giving him, what was requested is two years, or what was, one suggestion was to make it one year. So there are three things on the table right now. Do we give him a three-year extension? Do we give him a one-year extension? Or do we deny? And, you know, so, and this is a majority vote, it's not four out of five, it's only three out of five. So.
Well, we don't need another 40B, because we're at the inventory. And if.
We need something to happen with this property.
If something happened with this property.
And they have to.
I might, I could consider splitting the difference between zero and two, but I'm not comfortable at all giving him two. Right. Put a little pressure on him to try to resolve this.
I believe.
Alan?
Oh, as I said, I would give one year and then see what happens with our overall context in the town.
Cheryl?
I gotta tell you, I think we need to put the town in control. I think this is an ideal spot for a friend, we can, by denying this permit, we put the town back in control. It's an ideal spot for a friendly 40B, where we can negotiate.
Cheryl, there's.
Why wouldn't it happen?
It was not a mechanism to.
Another 40B.
Well, we know, but he wrote.
By denying this request, there is no mechanism to put the town in control of this project.
Right.
There's just no mechanism for that to happen.
Right now, any 40B that comes in front of us has to be a friendly one, because we can deny, we are over our inventory, and we can deny it. By, by turning down his, his extension, we then have the right, he can come back to us with a 40B, and we can negotiate it. It can be a friendly 40B, we can try to get a rental component, we can do all kinds of things that are so much more beneficial to the town. If he still wants to build a 40B.
So he's going to come back with a 40B. What if he says the heck, we're going to walk away and do similar development or whatever is allowed by zoning, which right now is very restrictive of this.
And there's no guarantee.
So what if he goes back to residential?
No guarantee that it's going to have.
If he goes back to residential, is that a take?
The vacant lot, probably what that it is now.
Why, he's got far too much money in that.
Mr. Kimball, any further comments?
No, Bill, I'm not done yet. You just were rude to me, too. Bill?
I'm open to the one year. I mean, I don't know what the developer's been talking to with other town officials, and I hear this talk about plans that are going on. I don't know if the attorney wants to address, make us the board feel better that what, you know, shed some light on what these ideas are for that piece of property, because we're not building a 40B. What are we talking about? Is that something you can talk about?
I don't really know, and that's, that's the truth. We, they have been talking about other recreational opportunities for that property. I, I know that the Fletcher family, it's spent a considerable amount of time trying to build various rezoning proposals for soccer fields and other recreational uses with a commercial component in the back. That ended up resulting in the Fletcher family filing a, a permit for a residential development. I, I think that we are, we are looking towards more recreational opportunities. The, the denial of an extension tonight really ends up forcing our hands to build the existing project. And I think that, that if we went back to DHCD as in the field route to say that this still is a viable project in light of the fact that permits have not been pulled for the 15 Great Road project, I believe that we still have standing to, to, to do that and to say that you have to honor your permit. We don't want to be involved with that, but we're looking for is an extension. We don't want to be involved with that, but we're looking for is an extension to say that, okay, let's really force our hand relative to evaluating where we stand with other development opportunities while at the same time not making this property 100% valueless. Our... One of the big components of this project is, as far as value added, is the sewage treatment plant, and we want to keep that as a viable thing for whatever we end up doing with this project. So the extension itself is important. That we would be looking towards doing some kind of an expansion of recreational opportunities, which would benefit the town of Littleton, and they are looking into that, they have looked into that. Michael Kimble is a very private guy, but he's always thinking about the next great thing. He's done some absolutely amazing things with Kimble's Ice Cream and the expansion that they've had there and done that in a very systematic, wonderful way. Everything that he does is super-class A, and this is his next project, is defining where we are with this property.
Yeah, I want to say I completely agree with what you said. I think it's great. I think what I've seen of Mike's work has been fabulous. I think the issue for me is the issue of the fact that 40B is a lever, that towns, you know, sort of forces towns to have to do certain things a certain way. It's really designed to provide low-income housing, at least opportunities for people. That's the idea. That's what the Housing Commission is concerned with. In this particular case, we've got this continuous lever that we keep sort of, you know, acquiescing to, that's what I think is really uncomfortable for people on the board. I think that if Mike wanted to develop housing on his own outside of 40B or recreation or any number of host of other things, I think there'd be a lot of people saying, "Hey, that's great because we know he's probably going to do a terrific job." I think the issue is the lever against the board about... And so that's why I say if we put it out for another year, and if we're going to do the 40B and the intention of 40B, I think we're showing, you know, good faith in doing that, and enables Mike to do, you know, what he wants to do on the 40B if he does want to do anything. At the same time, it gives us an opportunity to see how many permits are pulled, and are we really in good standing about having our, you know, quota or our requirements met? Gives us some time to see if that's going to happen so that that way you kind of get something out of that. We kind of get a little time, and we still protect ourselves from the Housing Commission, you know, having a...
But he doesn't count anymore because they didn't pull the permits.
But I'm just saying that in terms of being vulnerable, I think that giving a one-year extension gives us some room, gives them some room. I think it's a reasonable compromise, and, you know, it avoids us being really vulnerable to the way Housing Commission might decide, "Well, we don't really count that, so, you know, you denied it. You can come in and do whatever you want," which could be, who knows what that could be. So I think one year would be a reasonable compromise.
Do you want to make that as a motion?
I would move that, as said, that we provide a one-year extension.
Extend the 40B...
Extend the 40B for a period of one year.
To July 6, 2015.
2015, yeah.
I'll second.
Are we going to put any conditions on it such that...
It should be nice to say, "Come back with your final plan," or something like that.
If he's going to do recreation, and, I mean, those are major changes that are going to have to come before us anyway.
Right.
So why not just come before us with a whole new plan?
No, I think just granting a one-year extension, I think is sufficient to satisfy what we need to do. That's my own feeling.
I agree.
Okay. We don't need to have a motion to close the hearing because it's not really a public open hearing. It's an open hearing, but not a public hearing. All right. There's a motion before the board to extend the comprehensive permit to, for one year to July 6, 2015. All those in favor? I'm going to do this one person at a time.
I have a... Can we put a caveat on it, provided that it meets current fire code and state...
We don't need to because that's outside the purview of the zoning board and the jurisdiction of the BBR or the Department of Public Safety.
When reviewing 40Bs, we make sure that all of those components are in there.
That it's under the purview of the Department of Public Safety Commonwealth of Massachusetts. State law says we cannot throw any caveat in. No, every guy has a building fire code, border health or conservation.
And saying that it must meet it certainly can't...
It definitely will because building permits will not be issued, and seagoes would not be issued unless they do meet the necessary requirements.
I'm questioning whether we're creating a grandfather situation.
No.
Okay.
I'm telling you, no. I know from...
Okay, Bill, if you're wrong, I'm going to hang you up.
You've said it publicly, I've been wrong before, you have never approved it yet.
Oh, yes, I have. I got pulled down in zoning more than once. When you're especially oversized.
Okay, Sean?
I'm in favor of the one-year extension.
Cheryl?
I'm not. I think we need to... We look.
Rod?
Aye.
Alan?
Aye.
Myself, aye. This passes four to one, with Cheryl being the one exception.
And I would suggest, you heard a lot of the issues and concerns and so, maybe take that back just a little and see if you can wrap this thing up one way or the other than the other.
Thank you very much. I appreciate you.
You know...
Thank you.
You don't have something to add? You have a one-year to July 6, 2015, and we'll have to individually go in the office and sign it.
We can sign it next month, the next year.
If there is a committee. I don't know, do we have anything?
Yes, this is your...
Okay.
Okay, returning back to the regular meeting. Do you have administrative matters in front of page 35? Page 35. I'm going to skip elections for a minute, we'll do that last. Board member recommendation to the Board of Selectmen. We have three of our zoning board members who are coming up for renewal. Jeff Yates, John Cantino, and alternate Patrick Joyce. All three of them have submitted their papers for reappointment, and I don't know why the selectmen are asking our board to make a recommendation, but selectmen have been doing that now for the last two rounds of appointments, and so cooperatively, we will discuss it.
Why is Jeff up and not me? Because we came in the same year.
I just do what I'm told. I don't know.
There's a list here.
I think there's some are appointed for two years and some slots are...
Probably been appointed for less than that because he filled in the vacancies.
Whatever.
Jeff Yates is appointed 6/20/11, and Cheryl Hollinger, 5/14/12. You came up for renewal.
Last year.
Last year.
Oh, I see, probably because I filled in...
Maybe for someone else, and I've got a real appointment.
Yeah, because Patrick was filling in because we have a 40B coming up.
Okay. So, Board, would you like to discuss, if I could paraphrase, what I heard you tell me, Bill, and you can correct me, is that we always had a five-member board with three alternates, and we were asked to accept a fourth alternate because of the numerous 40Bs that we had coming up.
And we felt that we needed one more because of major 40Bs.
Yeah, so that we would have enough members to substitute in. So ideally, and hopefully, we may want to go back to the selectmen after this round of appointments and ask them to reduce our numbers back to five and three again rather than five and four. It hasn't been burdensome to have extra people. I always liked the extra input and the extra points of view myself, and I think it makes us a better represented board when we have extra people.
The only thing is it probably is going to stay the four until one of the four alternates decides not to renew.
Or one of us needs...
Because you're going to kick, or one of you leave.
Yeah.
Yeah, because let's not kick someone off.
Otherwise, you have to kick somebody out.
Yeah, and I'm against that, against kicking someone off, obviously. But what does the board feel about having the extra people to input? I don't think it gets unwieldy. No.
It hasn't.
And I think it gives a little relief, too, for the absenteeism. I know Mark Sossi, for instance, has a very aggressive schedule with his track obligations, and he's had to miss a couple of meetings, and I think he feels a little less pressure to be absent when he knows that there are other alternates.
And actually, very seldom has had all four of us been here.
Yeah.
Usually two or three.
Yeah.
No, I think we need the people because we all have the things going on. Plus, more of us might develop once and then...
You can move forward. So may I have a motion, please, to recommend for reappointment Jeff Yates, Patrick Joyce, and John Cantino?
I make a motion that we recommend for reappointment Jeff Yates, John Cantino, and Patrick Joyce.
And I would ask you to put into that any letter that goes up to the selectmen, Jeff and Sean as permanent members, and Patrick as alternate.
Now, can they vote on themselves like that?
Can they vote on... Well, it's a full board, sure.
Yeah, okay.
So we got five signing? Four, five? No, you don't want them to vote on themselves.
No, I don't know. I was just answering the question.
They can, but it's the five members.
The five members, yeah. So all those, second on that motion, please?
Second.
Can't second if you're with the five members.
Oh, so they are voting on both of them?
Yes.
Okay.
They've got a chance to kick themselves.
You guys are voting on yourselves, I see. Don't you want to appoint?
Where can we have voting?
Yes, you are.
We are.
You are voting.
Don't you want to appoint the alternate still?
I need a second to the motion to appoint yourselves.
I'm not going to second.
I made the motion, I can't second. You can second.
Can you second?
I'll second.
All those in favor of those reappointments, Senator? Aye. All those opposed? No. I just want to comment that I've been on this board, I think, for maybe 35 years. We're going to check it.
I don't know, you're that old.
I'm not that old. But it's always been a pleasure to me that the board members stay on this board. They don't leave if they don't want to leave, and the selectmen keep the board members on. There's never been an occasion, to my knowledge, that someone was dissed for being on the board. And I appreciate that continuity because it gives a lot of continuity to the decisions we make, too, where we know what we've done in the past and what makes sense, and I like Minutes. I sat in the hall making comments to minutes, so I think we can do two months. If you don't mind, Shelley, in the month of January, there were an awful lot of very important things in those minutes, which gives the backdrop for the massive modifications to the 40B at Omni. Would you send me that in Word? And I just want to edit dramatically some of your sentences. Your minutes are very well written, but I think it's important to have that record be a little more clear to read, okay?
Maybe change on December.
Let's go there. I'm putting a hold on January.
In case that's your...
Thank you. That's his... Oh, thank you.
His notes on January.
Thank you very much.
Well, I'm thinking about who's going to write the decision.
Oh...
What?
For...
Ethan?
Yeah.
I'll take it. This is a special one.
So going to December, who's got changes on December?
I do. Shelley, second paragraph, second sentence, Cheryl Hollinger states, "Do you feel the size of the apartments are too large?" Apartment buildings. I didn't think the apartments were too large.
Just before that, it's in the people who are present on the third line down on the right, it says, "Select men, M-E-N, Jenna Bronson." Select men, M-E-N. Just make it select man or woman.
Select man.
Select person.
It is select man.
No, it's... She's not... They're not... Just one. Only one is here, not more than one. That's all. And then that was my page one. Anybody else?
Yeah. How far administrative matters the board reviewed in the revised application form and instructions, and revisions were made. We did make revisions, if I take that. Down under the second paragraph, 1, 2, 3, 4th line, vice chair William Finesworth noted, not replied. Now, the fire prevention officer does not have an issue with the size, and then, no, the size... Now, there's a comma in there.
It sounds like the fire prevention officer wants to review the waiver this next year.
Yep.
Just make it a new sentence.
Right, right.
Friendsworth wants...
You do with the size, and then the fire prevention officer... No, no. Mr. Finesworth wants the question...
Requested. Yeah, requested, requested to address the waiver this year.
Which we did a couple of months.
Yeah.
Next page, where the paragraph starts, Chair Gould is 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, seven lines down, buildings, comma, he likes three instead of four buildings. Down the first... The paragraph before the bottom, where Chair Gould, and Monday, December 30th, call it 2013 at, and I don't know if just what mine printed off in here, what was that, 130? We have?
At least 130.
130. And 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7 lines down, at a later date, period marks, obviously, would like to, more rationale for why and when, wants to make sure to keep the number of affordable units.
And rationale in that sentence hasn't been on the end, please.
Also, in that paragraph, line, if we catch what we said about us, but Cheryl Hollinger thinks there are enough concessions, height and size should make the rent perpetuity, is that right? If revisit at a later date, more appropriate. That doesn't make any sense.
It seems to be a string of your thoughts. These are not fully grammatically correct sentences. So she was catching, it was a lot of fast talk, she was catching all the things you had on your mind. So you thought there were enough concessions, comma...
That we should make the buildings rental in perpetuity.
Wait a minute, allowing height and size was only mine.
Enough concessions and allowing...
Should make the buildings rental in perpetuity is fine. Should make the buildings rental in perpetuity.
Enough concessions on the height and size?
Yeah.
On the height and size?
Because of those concessions...
That we should be able to make the buildings rental in perpetuity. Does that make sense, Michelle?
Yeah.
Read that again. Cheryl Hollinger believed there are enough concessions on the height and size...
To justify.
To justify, to making the buildings rental in perpetuity. If we need to revisit it at a later date...
That would be more appropriate.
That would be more appropriate. So you have to make two sentences.
Yeah.
Well, Bill thinks it should be considered at a later date.
Next.
Should rationale have any?
Yeah, we just corrected that.
Sure. Want to make sure. Mark Sossner would like more rationale for why and when, wants to make sure to keep the number of affordable units.
Yeah, meaning according to the...
And you're going to say wants instead of want.
Cool.
You don't have any dictic memory.
Okay, anything else?
Should be...
Some more sentences on that. So do we also have to take a motion to approve and amend it?
Motion to approve and amend it?
Second to that motion, please?
Second.
All those in favor, the Senator, say aye. Aye, opposed. Hearing on, the minutes are approved for December as amended. Okay, the next set, we're going to put January in hold. And February. And I have a couple of small things in February. Not until the third paragraph down. Do you get anything, Rod?
The only thing is that it's down the 1, 2, 3 paragraph, third line up, just says The only thing is, it's down the 123rd paragraph, third line up, just says, "William, should be Farnsworth." I mean, just to keep consistent with the rest of the minutes.
Isn't that where we asked him to make a mock-up of the signs?
We didn't ask for mock-up on this, on the 40B. So on that paragraph, 1234567, line down, the word starts, the line starts waivers. Jeff Yates doesn't mind waivers given on signs. And then the last line, the signs, the very last few words, the signs are spaced about 130 feet apart. And that was okay with us. I don't remember us asking him for a mock-up of signs over there, Cheryl.
On the, no, we asked for them, but then he came back the next month and said he didn't make any changes. So I guess it was the meeting before this January meeting, we asked for a mock-up, because he was asking for different sizes at that point.
Oh, then he came back?
And then he came back and said he wasn't going to ask them. There is a change here. It says, Chair Gould agrees with William that is not safe or reasonable, put all information on one sign. It says the signs as proposed are attractive, but she believes the signs as proposed are attractive.
I hate to be picky about this, but was it that Bill and Sherri agreed that they were proposed as attractive, or does it matter?
I think it was me.
Okay. I would have used a word like attractive.
No, you're right.
No, he did keep saying he likes colorful signs.
He likes colorful signs, but I...
In which case, I think he should go to the town meeting and get the bylaw changed.
And he likes big signs, too.
Yeah.
Okay, this is going to deteriorate fast. Okay. Now we are at...
Are we done?
Yes, ready to take a motion.
Motion to approve is...
Second to that motion, please.
My second.
All those in favor of sitting by this, aye? Aye. Opposed? Hearing none, those minutes are passed. We're good, we're fine. And I just want to tell the board that I had a call this week to go in and sign the final set of drawings for Omni, because they're under some pressure now to get their treatment plan started. And the reason the treatment plan's been held up is because they had to get something that their funding bank needed, which they just got. So they're full steam ahead now, they're going to, they had equipment. Shelley, did you tell me that?
I told you that. I saw it, ran it to Leslie French, and she said that day, equipment was going to be on the site.
They pre-sold over a dozen of those...
Both the 48 and the 40B have been pre-sold.
So that's, and that's pretty exciting. So it's, you know, that one's happening.
The 40B are pre-sold, I thought they were...
Yes.
The, the little houses...
The ownership...
They sold, they pre-paved some details.
I thought still that it was by lottery.
No, not only, only...
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm just saying that element of the 40B, the little houses.
Not the part that isn't...
American.
The marketing ones.
But the other parts, the other, the other single families that are connected, that are in the fourth, the part we didn't look at, but they're connected to the septic, they've also pre-sold some of those.
Yeah.
The other housing houses are selling at crazy, it's a crazy market this spring.
Yeah, it's a, it's a very active market, this, for sale market this spring. And, and I did take the liberty of signing those plans as the chair of the board. It was a couple of days ago, and I thought about bringing them here, and Roland was under some pressure, and I had kept him held up one day as if I, he was under some pressure from them to get them signed, and I felt like he did, oh, you brought them here in Morris to see, so anybody who wants to renew them, challenge it can, but I was satisfied that Roland looked at it, and he was just asking me to sign, so we all had the same working set of drawings in the office.
Maybe make any changes.
No, no, yeah. Okay, so that moves us to elections, it's 10 of nine, it's the board's pleasure, elections of officers, I guess we have to do that every March, and we're a little late again.
Should I, should I leave the room, and you guys say what you want to say?
Well, I would like to say that anyone, anyone who wants can assume the duties, I will gladly step aside.
You have more time, want to do that? Bill?
Actually, no, because, because Bill, Bill is the great resource now for decision writing, it comes like two days after the meeting, so...
If it's a secret, you can't do it.
So we can't burden him with other duties.
He's the great decision writer, too, and he's got the great decision template, and I'm going to, I'm going to suggest that you might want to send us around a new, improved, revised template, you found a couple of things you want to change to it. And I don't think this whole board has your latest and greatest talent. So that would be great, that would be a big help to all of us, and maybe allow us to spread the decision writing out. Anybody else want to be chair? Does anybody else want to nominate someone for chair?
I don't want anybody else to chair. You do, you're a chairman. You know it very well.
I enjoy being chair, I really enjoy encouraging participation by everyone and moderating, I'm a peacemaker by nature, so I like that.
I propose we elect Sherri Gould. We elect Sherri Gould as chair of the ZBA. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I think you get to vote on this.
No, they don't.
Do alternates on other boards get to vote?
And so, only regular members, well, other boards, though, we have alternates.
We don't?
And so...
I move that we, we reelect Bill Farnsworth as vice chair. Is there a second?
All those in favor? Aye. Moving on.
Do you go as state clerk?
I think I may push it.
I don't want to be clerk.
Unless anyone else wants to do it, I'll be happy.
No, I don't want to be clerk.
I couldn't do it, I don't have the time with a bill.
I'm busy, I'm busy being a single working mom with three teenagers, I'm not going to do it, I'm sorry.
It's, it's, I understand it's a difficult job, but it's very convenient to have you so close.
Oh, it's, it's, it's not a huge time thing, it's, it's fine. Diane and Linda in the clerk's office know the girl now, and we have the right pens and...
I also like it that you're next door, so when I'm late to deliver it, I can slip that at the door and pretend that it's been there a long time.
Actually, before emailing Word processing, what a pain it must have been.
I can imagine. Well, you know, Charlotte Rafferty, and I'd like to remember her fondly, used to, you were here when Charlotte's, oh my God, she was the kindest, gentlest person, but she used to do it by hand in her basement at home, and I don't know how she ever kept up with it, and she couldn't understand the invention of the new-fangled computer and Word processing. Remember that?
Oh, yes.
I'd like to make a motion that we reelect Jeff Yates as secretary to the ZBA.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Is that secretary or clerk?
Clerk.
Sorry, clerk.
And do we, we need a vice clerk?
Oh, John, you're the vice clerk. I am. I don't do a shot too loud. I've got to get your...
So you can go out of town. Make a motion, Jeff.
I move that we reelect John Cantino as vice clerk.
Second. All those in favor? Aye.
I can't vote.
Thank you, everyone, for your vote of support conference. I like our board, I would like to, maybe, let's adjourn the meeting, I just want to make one comment before we leave, please. Yeah, but let's adjourn, this will be off the record.
Let's turn the TV off then, too.